This conference will now be recorded.
Today is Wednesday, November 2nd, 2022, and I would like to call to tonight's city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States.
Which stands one nation.
Clerk, can I have the roll call?
Councilmember Fox. Present. Councilmember Casper.
Here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Strobin.
Present.
President.
Councilmember Servini.
President.
Mayor Thornton.
Present. Thank you. Next is citizen public comment. Clerk, do we have any public comments from the audience this evening?
Al.
Al Philo, 152 West 15th Street. Well, it's November already. That means Veterans Day is coming up here. Well, at the end of next week is the 11th, and that's Veterans Day. So the activity is going on. This Saturday is the big one, the big parade down in Vancouver. If you've never been, it's a good opportunity, you know, to take your family out. And then, of course, next week, all the schools have programs. Next Thursday, they can't. They're all approximately about 2:00 in the afternoon. So if you want to go to all three here, that's too bad. But anyway, so I want to wish everybody a Happy Veterans Day, or however that goes. But I want to, a buddy of mine, he read this bumper, he had read this bumper sticker, and he said, he said, "Yeah, this reminds me." Okay. And so, if you can read this bumper sticker, thank a teacher. If you are reading it in English, thank a veteran. God bless America.
Thank you.
Oh, football game, Stragi, first district, and it's a Woodland against Oklahoma.
Any others?
No.
So next, if there are any public comments from those calling in, now is the time for you to give us your public comment. Remember to push star six on your telephone before you start speaking. Not hearing anyone, we'll move on. Are there any public comments to be read this evening?
There is one. From Suzy Terrell, 628 East 18th Street. Happy almost anniversary, newer council members. Can you believe it's already been a year? I wanted to congratulate you for fighting a hard battle when most others, including myself, didn't have the guts to do. I know you had a very steep learning curve, and you've taken some heat in not immediately bringing the police back like you all wanted. But wanting to and doing it are two very different things. You had some very strong attitudes to deal with. Knowing it or not, outsourcing the police had been on the city's agenda for a long time, and with COVID, BLM, and the defunding campaign across the nation, events just fell into the city's lap to make this happen, and now it's almost impossible to overturn. I know the city blames it all on the national outcry, but it was the city's constant bullying and not being willing to work with the departments that drove them away in the first place. They'd still be here if attitudes had been different. I know Tom was a Lone Ranger there for a while, fighting an uphill battle, so I'm sure he's very glad to have you all with him. Please hang in there and with us, and keep fighting for us. We truly appreciate your service to our community. There are no other comments.
Thank you. So I'm going to kind of break protocol here this evening, and I do have a prepared response that I would like to read to the city council and to the community in response to the public comment that we just received from Mrs. Terrell. First, outsourcing the police has not been on the city's agenda for a long time. At this point, all of our new city council members have been educated and understands that the city has been experiencing a general fund structural deficit that is being addressed for the city's long-term fiscal sustainability. All the reasons for the continuing structural deficit have been thoroughly discussed at numerous city council meetings. For instance, the city's proposed 2023 general fund budget shows a budget deficit that's where expenditures exceed revenues of $684,000. Second, the reality is that the city's structural deficit was identified before COVID, BLM, and the nationwide defunding the police campaign that Mrs. Terrell refers to in her public comment this evening. Furthermore, I respectfully disagree with Mrs. Terrell's comment that it was the, quote, "city's constant negative attitude and not being willing to work with the departments" that drove them away in the first place, quote, quote. Even if we were to ignore the fallout from the political unrest and destruction that has occurred nationwide, which ultimately resulted in several changes made to state and federal law enforcement laws, which has made it even more challenging for La Center to maintain its current staffing levels in all departments, it still does not change the fundamental fact that the city of La Center has a projected ongoing fiscal shortfall that must be addressed. Third, moreover, for the record, neither I nor any previous city council member ever said or expressed a desire to defund the police. Period. I have always supported law enforcement. As some of you know, my wife is retired federal law enforcement special agent, and throughout her career, I've had the privilege to meet many federal, state, and local law enforcement officials, and as a result, have nothing but the highest regard and respect for all the men and women who have dedicated their lives to serving in law enforcement. It has always been and will continue to be my highest priority to provide the highest level of public safety to our community that is justified by our current and projected financial limitations. Again, I felt compelled to write that in response to the comment that we received this evening. Next is the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carried. Thank you.
This is Kimberly Elbin. Can I speak?
I'm sorry.
Kimberly Elbin is asking to speak. I believe she has a public comment.
The public comment period has expired.
I'm so sorry that you can't accommodate the public citizen, but thank you.
Thank you.
Ladies, we have a proclamation for this evening? Okay, I got it. I'm sorry. Thank you. We do have one proclamation this evening that I'd like to read at this time. Proclamation rescinding civil emergency. Whereas, by Resolution 2008-291, adopting the emergency management plan for the city of La Center, the mayor is authorized to issue a proclamation of emergency, authorizing emergency expenditures, coordinate identification of emergency funding sources, and appoint an agent for the Public Assistance Program. And whereas, on January 31st, 2022, the United States Department of Public Health and Human Services Secretary declared a public emergency for novel coronavirus COVID-19. And whereas, on February 29th, 2020, Governor Jay Inslee proclaimed that a state of emergency exists in all counties in Washington State, and directed state agencies and departments to use resources and to do everything reasonably possible to assist affected political subdivisions in an effort to respond to and recover from the outbreak. And whereas, on March 19th, 2020, La Center City Council voted to declare a public emergency for their novel coronavirus COVID-19. And whereas, on October 31st, 2022, Governor Jay Inslee will end his state of emergency in all counties in Washington State and direct state agencies and departments to resume to conditions prior to the pandemic. And now, therefore, I, Greg Thornton, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of La Center, do hereby rescind the local emergency due to the COVID-19 outbreak and the emergency operations that were in effect. The proclamation immediately terminates the issue of proclamation signed March 19th, 2020, because it has been determined that the extraordinary measures are no longer required for the protection of the public safety and welfare. It is so proclaimed the second day of November 2022. Thank you. Next are council staff reports. Councilmember Fox. I think council comments.
No, that's okay. I thought, is it the attorney's report or your report?
I'm sorry.
Mayor's report first, or are we going?
No, it's council staff reports and announcements. We'll go with the council member comments first. I'm sorry, excuse me, Melissa. You're right. I'll go through my report real quick.
That's okay. Yeah, yours and then the attorney's, and then, yeah, then I'll go. Yeah.
Next is the mayor's report. I don't like get that mixed up.
That's okay. I just was like, do I really go? Or? I'm like, that's all right.
Just a reminder, our next city council meeting will be Wednesday, November 16th. There will be a work session with the council meeting starting at 5:30. Again, that's on November 16th. And also, as a reminder, the city offices will be closed Friday, November 11th, in observance of Veterans Day. And this evening, Council, I do not have an update on the police contract negotiations with Ridgefield. We just had an update last week, and I know that they're continuing to work on the consultant part issue moving forward.
Are you hungry? Okay, well, I'll be coming in.
Okay. So that's all I have to share with the council this evening. Next, we do have the attorney's report, and we.
I don't have anything.
And the city attorney doesn't have anything to report. That's always good news. Now, we'll move on to city council member comments.
All right.
Councilmember Fox.
Right. Good evening. Thanks for the small little crowd we got, but always good to have some representation here. Yeah, I don't have much to say, other than Halloween was, seemed like a great outing. Took my sons out and, you know, drove super slow. Everybody looked like they were, you know, being very watchful and kind and courteous, so it was just nice to be in a small town and just know that everybody has our back. So it was a nice night, and just love living in La Center. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Halloween was, was fun. It was, the rain held off, so it looked like a bunch of people were out having a, having a good time. As Al said earlier, next Tuesday is Election Day, so make sure people get out and vote. It's important. And then, this coming Saturday, I too will be down at the Veterans Day Parade in Vancouver. So that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle.
Yes, good evening. First off, I just, I got a couple shout-outs. I would like to recognize Maria for this last Saturday. She came in on her day off. A community member had reached out to me. They were renting out the community center building. They had forgotten to get the key on Friday while the office was still open. And they reached out to me. I sent her a text, and she zoomed over here and got the key for them, and they were able to have their party. So that's very much appreciated. So thank you for doing that, Maria. Next one was just, I just, every time I drive through town, I'm always rubbernecking, I guess, looking around at stuff and always just amazed at how well our grounds are maintained by Brian and your staff, and I just want to thank you guys for that. You guys always do a great job of that and keeping up on everything, and it's just nice to see, and it's nice to be able to, you know, show pride in our city. So last thing, I was just kind of, kind of, a little bit of a reminder to vote, but earlier this week, I went to an event where GOP leader Kevin McCarthy spoke, and he had a very impactful speech, but it just reminded me that, you know, we have to take our opportunities to vote. Like, it's our only chance for us to have a say or a voice in, you know, what we think is most morally valuable to us and our families and our finances. So, yeah, just make sure everybody gets out there to vote. And that's all I got.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Strobin?
I have no comment tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
And councilmember Servini?
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to encourage everyone to get out and celebrate Veterans Day. Coming from a family with many veterans, it's an important day, and teaching our children and grandchildren and the true meaning and everything that is encompassed in that day is, continues to be part of our heritage. And so I'd encourage you to make it a family event. I do believe that the, hopefully, our final time change, we'll see, is about to occur in this month. So continue to drive safely. Our hours in the dark will continue to increase, and safety will be paramount with the kids out on the streets and new drivers out in their cars, and more leaves on the wet roadways and more storms ahead. So please be cautious and slow down. And that's about it.
Thank you. Next on the agenda are staff reports. First staff report we have this evening will be presented by our Public Works Director, Brian Cast, and it's the Public Works and Community Development Staff Report. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and citizens. I'm going to go through just the recent updates here and just kind of hit the high points on our Public Works report today. So the first thing I wanted to mention was that we have been doing some striping with our own staff. Typically, in the past, we've used the county striping crews to help us out. Due to some changes in staffing over there, they were not able to help us out this year. So staff did what they could with the equipment that we have, and next year, we're planning on going out for a bid to have a contractor help us out and do a larger striping program like we typically do. We have had some concerns about La Center Road in particular and it being difficult to see now that it's getting darker. And so we focused on La Center Road, and we also are adding some reflective markers out there to help visibility. As everyone has noticed, it is fall, and leaves are beginning to fall as well. So we are shifting over to, from our mowing operations to leaf cleanup, which takes a decent amount of time, and so you will see the crews out, both on the streets and in the parks, cleaning up leaves and disposing of them properly so that they don't plug catch basins and cause localized flooding. On the wastewater operations side, we did the first cleaning of our membrane bioreactors since they were replaced this summer, and that went well. There's been other maintenance going on, and I wanted to let everyone know that we have Monty Herbie, who was hired about six months ago, is our acting interim chief operator, and we are currently recruiting. We had some interviews this afternoon for the vacant lead position. We also, in the wastewater side, have been implementing a new computer control system, which includes a new alarm dialer, and that went into operation this last month. On the engineering side, the plans and permitting for the community kitchen remodel are completed, and we are just about ready to send that project out to bid. Again, we're planning to basically bid through the end of this year and anticipate construction starting early next year, depending on supply chain availability for the components for that kitchen remodel. We also have kicked off the.
Hey, Brian.
Yes?
With that remodel that they're doing, is there any sort of, like, an architectural design thing that people can see or look at?
We have some plans that we could share, that it's all internal to the kitchen, so it's basically where we're adding new, you know, hoods and range and refrigerators and the like. So it's not, it's not really going to look any different from the outside with this particular project, but the kitchen will hopefully be a lot more functional and usable for Meals on Wheels and the other folks that use that kitchen.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Yeah. We've also kicked off the update to the city's park recreation and open space plan. If you recall, we selected Conservation Technics to do that work. So we'll begin that work this year, wrap it up next year, and have an update to our parks planned to help plan where parks and trails will go to accommodate the growth that we've been seeing here. On the building department side, temporary occupancies have begun being issued for the apartments out at Riverside. We have issued temporary occupancy to the clubhouse and to the first apartment building, and they anticipate every few weeks having another building complete and ready for occupancy, and they're starting to lease those out. Got to opportunity to see inside the clubhouse and the apartments, and they're very nice, so I'm sure you could arrange a tour if you'd like. But they're very, very high-end and very nice apartments, and they're real amenity to the city here. The last thing on building was, that I wanted to highlight, was Minute Mart. We have worked with them, and they will be submitting a foundation-only permit while we wrap up the last couple responses to their structural plans. Saw them out there today again, working, so it's good to see progress. We're happy to be working with them to keep the project moving while we finish up their review. We can scroll down to the map. So again, a couple of highlights here. Riverside Estates, everyone's favorite project. We're getting to the tail end of that. Signed the final plat for Phase 2 this week, and as I mentioned, Phase 3, which is the apartments, has been getting temporary occupancies. Also, at the last meeting, I believe, signed the bonding, so we're getting pretty close to wrapping that project up, which is exciting. Stevens Hillside has been continuing to make rapid progress and is getting ready. They have curbs in place now and are looking at paving the subdivision this month, so they should be wrapped up here before the end of the year and probably come into the city for final plats so that they can begin building in that subdivision. That's number 13 on the map. Number 37, Ace's View Subdivision. There's an update even fresher than the notes here. We found them complete now, and they have a hearing scheduled for the 28th of this month. And then finally, number 44, Valley View Subdivision. Again, more recent information that is in the staff report. They have also been found to have a complete application. We are working with them to schedule a hearing in early January. So with that, happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Yeah, yeah, Brian. Have we heard anything from the tribe on their plans for the property they purchased on this side of the freeway?
At the community department, development department level, we have not. There may be some other conversations going on at the higher level that, but we can look into that and get, bring back some information potentially in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Good report.
Thank you.
Next, our senior accountant will be presenting the third quarter financial report. So Riley, it's all yours.
There we go. All right, now working? All right, Q3 financial update. So this first column over there, Q1 through Q3 actual. That's what we've seen through the end of September, and I did get October mostly reconciled today, so I'm a little bit ahead of all you guys, but I wasn't ready for presentation at the end of last week. So these annualization numbers, those are, for the most part, we'll just say that things are going to continue as normal unless we, there's some things that will make it very obvious that that's not the case, and if that is, you know, something's going to be changing, I'll have a note down here at the bottom. So, starting out with the general fund revenue. Overall, our revenue is looking pretty strong on the year. Pretty much all of our taxes have beaten our expectations. Property tax is always a little bit lower because not everybody always pays their property taxes, but we set the budget based on what the levy is, and we're going to go over that later on this evening. But the big ones are the retail sales and the gambling taxes. Those are both looking like, I guess, with the gambling taxes, we're all rating over what we had budgeted the year. Same with retail sales. And the retail sales tax, those, once we have the October numbers, that's still going higher than even the average so far this year. The gambling taxes are a little less than the average so far in the year, but still more than we had in the original budget for what we were expecting. So things are looking pretty strong there. Down to the other revenues, I'm sure you guys have listened to my reports all throughout the year, so you know that the construction wasn't quite as strong as we had predicted. So those licenses and permits and the charges for services didn't end up coming out as strong. But all in all, we're looking to be about half a million over what our expected revenues were on the year in the general fund. So things are looking all right. So now, we're going to go through all the general fund specific departments, and actually looking at this, I think every single department in the general fund has been under budget or is predicted to be under budget for the year, so looking good there, too. So Finance Department, let's see here. Of course, being so cheap, I don't even print stuff out in color, so I got to look up there to see what the green ones and so on are. Salaries and benefits, net, we're a little bit over budget, but not by a whole lot. Some of these things are just a function of how everybody's time gets allocated, and we're still always finding new things about how that works. But our insurance, that's one that we pay at the beginning of the year. So the biggest one that we are under budget on are both legal and HR. And that's just based on what we've, what we've needed. So about $80,000 total is the predicted under budget there. Legislative Department, this is a pretty small department, so we can easily do a pretty good job of predicting what we're actually going to spend. And look at that, we're only off by about 5%. So pretty close there. Not a whole lot to say, I suppose. Culture and Recreation, that's a weird one to annualize because that's one we kind of try to get right on the dollar to spend as much as we can to let everyone have a nice time. Municipal Court Department, which is a pretty boring one to present. That's pretty much just the municipal court costs that we get from the city of Battle Ground. That's about 80% of the budget, 84% of the actual expenditures so far this year. But overall, we're looking at an under budget in this department as well. Anybody feel free to stop me at any time if you have any questions. Police Department, this one is a lot under budget. As we all know, we don't have as many police officers as we had originally budgeted for. As a result, some of those services, we've gone over in some of those lines, but we're still looking like we're going to be under on the services because there's a lot of hiring costs that go into that, sending people to the police academy, so on and so forth, that we didn't actually spend. And that transfers out at the bottom, that $170,000, that was to buy a couple new police cars. I think since we're still waiting to figure out how the whole police contract is all going to shake down, we are holding off on that for now. So all in all, we are quite a bit under budget here. So all in all, we are quite a bit under budget here. Onto the planning slash community development department. This is one of those areas where we're still trying to figure out how all these things work, because those benefits are under, but the salaries are over. And so Marie and I were just talking about having to give a call to Springbrook to figure out how that mapping works. But since, as we also said, construction's a little bit down, so we haven't had to use our planner nearly as much either. So we're getting a little bit less revenue in, but we're also spending less money in our services there. So it kind of comes out to a bit of a wash. Onto the public works operations and the parks departments. One thing they kind of note here is on the public works operations, our salaries are over, our services are under. I think we had budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars per attempt. If we were originally thinking we would get through a temp agency, in which case it would have been paid through services, we ended up just actually hiring somebody, so it's paid via salaries instead. So those two kind of net out to a little bit under budget there. And then moving along, you might have to zoom out a little bit. I'm not, that pretty much gets it all in there, but here's the look at the general fund total. So we had about a two-point-three million dollar, or no, a one about a one million dollar fund balance in our general fund at the beginning of the year. And so it's looking like with these annualized numbers, we're going to end up at about two-point-eight million dollars in our fund balance in the general fund. So that's how this is all looking. So then moving on, we have all these separate funds. These ones are a little bit weird to annualize because they're often just kind of one-time things that go on in there. The reserve fund, that's one that we like to not touch, and we really haven't been. Pretty much all we get interest and dividends and a little bit of bank fees going on in there. We've got a pretty healthy fund balance in that one. I think our kind of goal is to have that be about one year of the budgeted expenditures. We're a little bit under that right now, but if we have a we still finish strong in the general fund, we could potentially transfer some into there next year to get that to what is about one year of expenditures. Impact fees. This is another area where you see a lot of red at the top because construction didn't quite, there were some large projects that were really our budgeted revenues were based upon, and we didn't get some of those. There's also some grants that we didn't get, so we didn't work on the projects either. So much lower revenues there, and we didn't get all the projects done either, but we're still getting some things done. You can see that Les Center Road paving construction, we got that one done, that was a big one, bought that park. And but overall, I think we're probably not going to see too much impact fees still trickling in throughout the year. Capital projects, the predominant revenues here are the real estate excise taxes, and we're slightly under, but we had started out pretty strong on the year with those taxes. It's tapered off a little bit. Probably has to do with the economy. Didn't get the grant for the community center, I think that is going to happen next year, I believe. Got the Forest Street widening, we've been working on that a little bit.
Yeah, I'll just elaborate on the community center. That's the one that I just mentioned in my report that's about ready to bid out.
And then on the projects down here, I didn't even try to do a formula for all these numbers. We just kind of went through and said, all right, how's this looking? Are we going to get it done? Are we not going to get it done? How much more is going to be spent on the year? So what we're still looking at doing is the police building roof, I think that one we're still looking at getting done. But other than that, things are largely done for the year as far as the expenditures in these capital projects. There's a lot of things that are into works, but a lot of those are just going to roll over into next year's budget. Vehicle and equipment fund. So since the we're not purchasing those two police vehicles, not getting the transfers in for that either. So we pretty much just bought one vehicle out of this this year. We had to transfer again to cover that, and that's going to be all we do this year. And I think we're working on getting some software to do a better job of tracking, all right, here's a list of all the vehicles we have, here's what the maintenance is on an annual basis, here's when we're going to have to replace these vehicles, how much we really be putting in every year, so it's not like here's a hundred thousand dollars to buy a new car going in, it's we'll maybe put in, you know, ten thousand dollars a year, and that will cover our needs when they come up. Sewer operations, the sewer fees, we're looking like we're going to be getting what we had hoped for in the river side of things. The biosolids is a little bit under, interest and dividends is a little bit under as well. We a little bit late a few years when we finally did our reinvesting there. The salaries and benefits, that one is definitely a little bit over. We got some people hired in there, but overall, it's looking like we might go over a little bit what we had budgeted here. And so if that is the case, we may have to do a budget amendment at the end of the year, but it's not by a whole lot. And a lot of that reasoning is because, see, that transfers out of a million dollars, it's obviously a pretty hefty portion of it, and that is to cover the the capital projects, which are the sewer capital fund, which we're going to have to look at next. So the sewer capital fund, this is very similar to the capital projects fund, which funds things for the everything else except for the sewer capital fund, that's only for sewer projects because these are enterprise funds. So we had that Les Center Road pump station, we got that one done, and that sewer membrane project, that was a real big one as well. We ended up a little bit under budget there, but it's good to, so we see the beginning and ending fund balances as far as what the actuals are in the annual budget, the annualizations. This one has a pretty low fund balance. We don't keep a whole lot in there, and that's why we are doing these transfers, you know, big million or a six-hundred thousand dollar transfer going into it. So that's one of those things, we had talked about the rate study in a few meetings past, that's one of those, we would really like to get that. So not necessarily a huge balance in here because we don't want to be having everybody else's money just sitting in our fund, but you know, if you have to do another six-hundred thousand dollar sewer membrane or some huge project like that, it's always good to have a bit of a buffer there. The sewer debt service, this was to pay off that public works cross fund loan. We have that debt service payment every year, I think we've got, it's going to be paid off in twenty-twenty-eight. And then the capital facilities charges, those are the sewer development charges, it's called a couple of different things, but those are construction-related as well. I think we had three come in in October, so there's probably not going to be that many more on the year. Fortunately, we have enough in the fund balance to pay off that loan, so we're thinking the any extra capital that goes in there will end up going into sewer capital fund for future projects, we don't have to take out a loan next time. And then finally, the stormwater utility fund, a much smaller one, but really looks like a little bit under on the revenues and a decent bit under on the expenditures, largely due to some capital projects that illicit connection investigation and correction is put off till next year. And that's what we got.
Thank you, Riley. Any questions for Riley this evening, City Council?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Strubin?
No, I have no questions for Riley. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thanks again, Riley. Good report.
Thank you.
We do have one ordinance on the agenda this evening. It's ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-eleven, add valorum taxes, and our Director of Administrative Services will be presenting that this evening. Maria, it's all yours.
Okay. We are doing a public hearing tonight on the revenue sources, which is required by RCW eighty-four-point-five-five-point-one-two-zero prior to passing the twenty-twenty-three property tax levy. And just for the schedule, we will also have a public hearing at the November sixteenth council meeting for the budget adoption. So we have our general fund revenue analysis up on the screen. We have-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm just looking for the staff report.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have increased our property tax revenue to six-hundred-and-forty-thousand, which is forty-three-thousand-dollar increase from last year. We will have a slight increase in utility excise taxes based upon new homes and overall rate increases. We have increased our sales and use tax to sixty thousand dollars a month. We also will start receiving the public safety tax, which is included in that amount. And so for the year, we have estimated seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, and we continue to think that that is a conservative number based on what we have seen come in this year. Our card room revenue is estimated at a hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars a month, totaling one-point-five-six-million dollars for the year. And we anticipate license and permits to be about the same next year as twenty-twenty-two. We currently are not anticipating any grant revenue for the general fund next year, and the total general fund revenue is three-point-seven-five-two-million dollars plus the transfer in for the city's sewer utility of four-hundred-thousand dollars, making the adjusted revenue four-point-one-five-two-million dollars. And then next, we have the property tax levy. So the assessed values are as of January first, twenty-twenty-two. Last year's assessed value was six-hundred-twenty-six-million-nine-hundred-seventy-three-thousand-four-hundred-twenty-five dollars. This year's assessed value is seven-hundred-fifty-nine-million-one-hundred-twenty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-thirty-nine dollars. The value appreciation is just over ninety-four-million dollars or a fifteen-percent increase. The twenty-twenty-two new construction assessed value is thirty-seven-million-nine-hundred-thirty-three-thousand-five-hundred-thirty-three dollars, which is a six-percent increase. There are no increases for annexations this year, and the state assessed utility infrastructure value is still to be determined. So we are using last year's numbers per guidance from the assessor's office. The levy amount is five-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-one dollars, that's for twenty-twenty-two, and a one-percent increase would be five-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-seven dollars. The new construction levy increase is thirty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-two dollars, and like I said, there is no increase for annexation. So the new rate is six-hundred-thirty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-thirty dollars. You divide that by the total assessed value, and you get a levy rate of eighty-four cents, which is under last year's levy rate, which was ninety-five cents. And then just for reference, our levy rate two years ago was just over a dollar. And then onto our utility revenue, the there is no increase in sewer rates. For the eighth year in a row, we will remain at sixty-six dollars a month, and the new development and the rate will create enough revenue for our debt repayment that we make every year. And then the stormwater maintenance fee will remain at ten dollars and sixty cents a month, and this is the first year that there has not been an increase in that rate since its inception in twenty-nineteen. Thank you, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Maria. So before I open the public hearing, are there any questions for Maria this evening on her report? Okay, so at seven-fourteen, I will open the public hearing. If anyone in the audience would like to come forward and comment on this evening's ordinance, please step forward now, and if you could limit your comments to three minutes, and please give us your name and address prior to asking your question.
Alphell, one-five-two West Fifteenth Street. Eight years since we increased the sewer rate. You know, everything else seems to have gone up, but the sewer rate hasn't gone up in eight years. Boy, if you raise that, just think of all the people who would come to these meetings.
Got that right.
You know, I mean, you would have people wanting to burn the place down, you know, so that's what I think we ought to do, let's get some participation, you know, increase that sewer rate. Eight years is a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Kimberly, this is for the ordinance that has been presented to the council. This is-
The funding?
Public comment.
Funding?
Pardon?
The funding?
This is only for the ordinance that's currently on the-
And which is that? I I know it's not public.
It's ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-eleven, we're only addressing the ad valorem tax for the twenty-twenty-three-
That's correct.
-city budget, okay.
All right. So I want to comment on the, what people are calling-
Please give us your name and address.
Kimberly Elbin, Les Center, Washington. So I'm a little out of breath, I just had to drive here. So I'm going to go back in time a little bit, when we did defund the police, you didn't maybe put it in words, but I'm just saying they were defunded. But so all of what the monies are doing is complying to something that took away our the constitutional entities of workers and employers, and now they're going to be mandated to follow policies that are unconstitutional. It goes a lot deeper than that. You know, I'm a little out of breath, I was cooking dinner, so here we are. So what I want to ask is, and this is nothing personal with any of you, but there is an agenda that you're following, I just want the people to-
Okay, I I don't mean to interrupt, Kimberly. Kimberly, what does this have to do with the ordinance?
Make sure that everything that you do is audited and is understanding that when the police were defunded, of which I am going to go back and find out those words, I believe they're there. And then we hire people that have been complying to something that the United States of America under God is not willing to do. And so that's what I'm going to do. This is my watch, I took an oath, and so in my ignorance of everything that you do, I'm going to have to stand and ask the simple questions, that are you complying and to what to and what end? Because frankly, a lot of workers and employees don't know that the police department, the fire department, and all those people that were serving us are somehow our tax dollars are being used for another entity and really, believe it or not, not serving us. Take a look at your hospitals, your ambulance, everything else. So also, let's get a some trees planted that bear fruit.
Do we have anybody else from the audience that'd like to make a comment this evening? Okay, so moving on, are there any public comments from those calling in this evening? Just a reminder, if you are calling in, press star six to unmute yourself before speaking. Not hearing any? Clerk, do we have any other comments that need to be read into the record this evening?
We do not.
Thank you. Okay, so at seven-nineteen, I will close the public comment period and turn it back over to the City Council for any additional discussion amongst the council members or questions for city staff.
I have nothing, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have no comment either.
Go ahead. Is this councilmember Strubin?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. This is councilmember Strubin, I said I have no comment on it, I she did a good job on the report.
Very good, thank you. Not hearing any more discussion, could I get a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-eleven establishing the ad valorem taxes necessary to finance the anticipated requirements of the city of Les Center, Washington for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three by increasing property tax revenue from the previous year by one percent.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance twenty-two-two-dash-eleven establishing the ad valorem taxes necessary to finance the anticipated requirements of the city of Les Center, Washington for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two-thousand-twenty-three by increasing property tax revenue from the previous year by one percent. Clerk, could I get a roll call? Clerk, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Serpini?
Yes.
The ordinance passes unanimously. Thank you, council. And again, thank you, Maria, for your presentation. Good job. So that concludes our council meeting for this evening. Again, I want to thank the people out of here for coming out this evening and joining us. It's much appreciated, and it's always great to have people in the audience.
I do have a question, though, however. This public hearing that you just had, you know, being on the phone at home, and I missed my public hearing. Where did that come in at the agenda? I did not read it. So didn't you kind of pull a snake on us? And maybe you should redo this when people, when it's advertised that there is a public hearing? Because frankly, I mean, maybe more people would have been here. Where was it?
It's on the agenda.
It's at the beginning.
Okay. If I could, do we have a, do we have a motion?
Well, we have public comment and public hearing, depending on if there are subjects to talk about.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, motion carries. Thank you, council. Have a good-